Okay, everyone, welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, December 7th, 2017. We're gonna begin, first of all, I want to recognize our school committee representative, Theo Rosen. Welcome, Theo. You're here, Theo?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore, alright, great, thank you. And our AAA president is here, welcome, glad you're here. And the school committee members are here as well, it's always good to have them show up for the meeting.
He didn't welcome us.
Alright, welcome. I want to begin by, we have an art display from the Addison Middle School. So this exhibit, which you can see, that's a little bit covered up, but you can see...
Nothing underneath there.
There was nothing underneath there, okay. So it's in all corners of the room here. This exhibit is meant to show the audience all of the art curriculum we are exploring in grades six through eight this year at the Addison. We begin each term by asking the students to reflect on their time at the Addison and the role of art in their lives in school and out. Students were asked to respond on paper bricks and describe what they think art adds to their life or to the world in words and illustrations. Our hope for this project is that students will go forward in the class and in their work with an awareness of their relationship to art and some reflection on the impact of art in their school life and in the world. On these three brick walls, we have hung photos of our students at work in the studio as well as some finished work from each grade. There are eighth grade Renaissance remix paintings where students have altered master paintings from the Renaissance and added new content and context that relate to current issues that are important to the students, as well as some comical reinterpretations of familiar works. This project was designed to connect to the eighth graders studies of the same period in their history class. There are seventh grade literary character masks where students have chosen characters from favorite books and created masks of them. The masks are meant to illustrate the personality traits and roles of those characters and exaggerated features and facial expressions. There are also sixth grade wearable art pieces. These works are sculptures designed by the sixth graders inspired by the powerful work of contemporary artist Nick Cave and his series of sound suits. The students were challenged to design and build a piece of art that could be worn on their heads using papier-mache, found objects, and recycled materials. Each piece reflects something important about the artist's personality, their interests or an issue that they are passionate about. So, we're lucky always to have the art here. Before we have public participation, Mr. Hayner has an announcement. Do you want to make your announcement, Mr. Hayner?
Thank you. This object right here is called the Screwball Award. The Arlington Rotary Club instituted this award for members who do something that's basically out of the ordinary. We pass this on on a regular basis. Mr. Greeley, the selectman, received it prior to me and announced it. And part of getting the Screwball Award is if you have a desk or an office or any place of public display, you're required to give it and be humiliated in public. Mr. Greeley gave this to me for a very strange reason, he said I talk too much. So, I have no idea why. Next Wednesday, I will be passing this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayner.
That's not extraordinary, that's normal.
Thank you.
Alright, public participation, we have Liz Exton, did I have it right?
Yeah.
Welcome, Liz.
Hi, I'm Liz Exton. I live on Washington Street. I am a kindergarten teacher and I have two children. My son will be a kindergartner at the Stratt School in September. And I'm here again tonight to continue to advocate for full-time TAs in all kindergarten classes in Arlington. I was pleased to hear that steps were taken this fall to provide full-time TAs to classes for some kindergartens and other classes in the district that had come to ask for that. However, I still don't think that that goes far enough to address the needs of kindergarteners and kindergarten teachers in Arlington. Over the last five years, the kindergarten class has grown as a district by at least eighty students. As you know, eighty percent of this year's kindergarten classes have twenty or more students. And while the half-day TA may have worked five years ago with class sizes below twenty students, I don't think it's an effective teaching model with more than twenty students in each classroom. And an alternative, as you've mentioned, would be to have more classrooms with smaller class sizes, but you've also acknowledged that there just isn't room for that. In addition to the class sizes growing in the last five years, the curricular expectations in kindergarten have also changed, and kindergarten teachers are being asked to provide more content to their students than ever before. And this cannot be done effectively with one teacher and twenty-three and twenty-four kindergarteners. So we need to look at the current state of our kindergarten class sizes and the curricular demands and realize that what was possible for one teacher five years ago is not possible anymore. Students are coming in with more social and emotional challenges than before, and in order to learn, students need to feel heard, understood, and appreciated. And one teacher cannot do that for twenty-four, five, and six-year-olds on a daily basis. At a previous public comment, a parent shared that his daughter had reported that the teacher didn't pay attention to her that day. And while I'm sure that's not a hundred percent accurate, that's a terrible way for a five-year-old to feel about school. And if the child is feeling that way, it means that we need to be doing something differently. Finally, safe schools are becoming a much bigger concern, and a kindergarten teacher's responsibilities have gone beyond supporting students' social and emotional skills and academic learning. And in today's climate, teachers have the added responsibility of being a protector of students. Having full-time kindergarten TAs would address many of the needs of the kindergarten students in Arlington. I again acknowledge that this is about funding and choosing how to spend a finite amount of money, but I urge you during this budget season to dig deep, think creatively, and prioritize the funding for full-time kindergarten TAs across Arlington.
Thank you very much. And the next person for public participation is Sarah Sawyer.
Hello. Hi, thanks for my name. Sarah Sawyer, as you said, and I'm also an Arlington resident, and I will be a parent in the 2008 intake of a kindergartner. And I'm here to support, as Liz just so eloquently described, the move to have full-time TAs in the kindergarten classrooms. As well as being a parent, I'm also an occupational therapist, a pediatric occupational therapist with over twenty years of experience inside and outside of the school systems, and have seen firsthand a lot of the challenges that many children obviously face in school, particularly children that are new to kindergarten, new to the classroom environment as a whole, and have shared many situations with class teachers who have felt extremely frustrated that they can't meet the needs of their students. As well as thinking about the children's emotional needs, as Liz described, there are so many, which are more challenging, family dynamics that the teachers are having to deal with, it isn't just education. And so, thinking about the emotional needs and the education, this safety piece, this piece about keeping children safe in our classrooms. And I really don't see how one adult can keep twenty-plus children safe in a classroom. I can't think of any other institution, organization, that would allow that ratio to occur. And so, the fact that we're allowing that ratio to occur in our schools is extremely concerning to me. I think, you know, it only takes one child to have a difficult day to throw off the entire classroom and have every child's experience be poor. I also happen to be a director of a large organization, and I hire staff and I work extremely hard to maintain staff. And I can only imagine that the morale of the teachers who aren't being able to teach children in the way that they would like to teach children, in the way that we expect them to teach our children, I can only imagine that their morale is low. And, you know, as knowing from my organization, retaining good staff is key. It's key to providing a really good service. And, to be honest, the ratio of staffing has led myself and my husband to consider not putting our child into the Arlington Public School System, which is not what we believe in. I believe in public education, and I believe that my child should be able to receive a safe, fun, emotionally and academically sound program. And I don't believe that we will be doing this if we don't increase the ratio of the teachers to the pupil, the pupil ratio. So, thanks for listening to me today.
Thank you very much for coming. Alright, well, stay tuned. The next thing on the agenda is the presentation by the elementary school principals about their expectations and hopes for the budget to come, the FY19 budget. So why don't you all come up? And maybe everyone can introduce themselves and the school they're at. Do you want to take over? So, maybe just introduce yourselves and the school you're at. You gotta kind of yell at the mic over there.
Pass it around.
Pass it around, yeah, otherwise...
I'm Karen Donato, the principal at Thompson.
Thank you.
Michael Hannah, principal of Stratt School.
Thank you, Michael.
Kristen D. Francisco, principal of Hartley Elementary.
Thad England, principal of Daleon Elementary.
Karen Harvey, principal of Pierce.
Good evening, Mark McInney, principal of Bishop.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Surge, I'm principal of Brack School.
Welcome, everyone, we're glad you're here. Is Thad and Karen gonna, you guys are gonna present?
Short straws, right here, you're looking at it.
The high honor.
Yeah, actually, yes, indeed. And looking forward to having a good conversation. So, thank you, everybody, for this opportunity to come to you and talk about our schools at the start of the budget season, the conversation around the direction of funding for our schools for next year. So we continue to be grateful for the continued support of our community, as well as for the opportunity to provide leadership in a district that values high-quality educational experiences for our children. And from everything that we've experienced, this is a fact that has been unwavering. I think we've been together now four years and are still as positive as ever about where we're at and where we're moving. In Arlington, our experiences, even though in different schools, is both similar and unique to trends, national trends in education currently. The popularity of our town has brought a wave of enrollment that's changing the population and dynamics of our schools, also the square footage of our schools. Standards and assessments are changing, and our teachers are needing to be more nimble than ever as the demands of the profession is shifting rapidly. The mental health crisis, the effects of trauma, and the fluidity of social identity are all real challenges that schools are being forced to confront, and we're seeing the impact on children as young as four or five years old. Technology advancements are offering us an unprecedented opportunity to challenge how schools and families educate and parent students, but not without unintended and sometimes unhealthy social-emotional side effects as young children interact and live more and more of their lives behind a screen. And parents are both more invested and more interested in their child's educational experience, but are also more worried because the world feels unsafe, and they rely on their teachers more. We all know that the work of schools is exciting and terrifically complex, and we've entered a moment in time when education has made its way from the back page to the front page. And it's more important than ever that we be transparent and honest about our strengths and our opportunities for growth. So, we begin tonight by providing an update on how we've used the resources that we prioritized in our budget requests last year, and we've introduced in our schools to keep our organizations moving forward. At the elementary level, we introduced two halftime assistant principals at Hardy and Daleen, both very successfully supporting the administrative responsibilities and the day-to-day work of teachers and students and families. A literacy coach was introduced last year at the elementary level, moving the team of teachers responsible for overseeing ELA teaching and learning advancements from two to three. Behavior support personnel were hired in five of the seven elementary schools to support behavioral interventions designed by the previous investments that we've made through BCBAs and social workers. The elementary team is approaching, so I'll shift gears for just a second, and we'll talk about this year. So, we've, after spending some time together, are going to approach this budget season differently than in previous years. So rather than look at fiscal year 19 in isolation, we've stepped back to consider the district priorities, the requests from our teachers, the direction of teaching and learning in Arlington, the resources that we have and that we need to support students and teachers in demonstrating success and high achievement. So what we'd like to present is a vision for how our elementary schools can and should be resourced so that we can say we are leading safe and supportive schools for every student in our town. Schools where high-quality teaching and professional learning are a priority, schools where each child, excuse me, has the opportunity to achieve at a high level, and all families in town are benefiting from their investment in our schools.
And so, this leads to our staffing requests for fiscal year 19 through 21. We realize that nothing happens overnight. We're recommending that each of our schools use the following staffing model as a guide for budgetary requests over the next two to three years, moving toward an equitable allocation of people and resources in cooperation with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, revised as needed with changes in demographics so that are currently unfolding across Arlington. So, over the next few years, we'd like to see halftime and full-time assistant principals equitable across all seven elementary schools, which would be an increase in five. Building-based ELA coaches, which would be an increase in four. Building-based mathematics coaches, which would be an increase in two. Support for social workers by increasing FTEs and BSPs. So for the FTEs, that would be three, and for behavior support personnel, that would be an increase of two. Math and divisionists for every elementary school would be an increase of 3.5 positions. And full-day TAs for our kindergarten classrooms would be an increase of 9.5 positions. District priorities and professional development initiatives. The staffing model we are presenting considers the day-to-day experience of our students and teachers, and also the district priorities that we are supporting as an administrative team. And highest on the list are developing culturally responsive schools and educators, implementing school-wide, school-day, social-emotional learning, aligned, high-quality instruction that supports significant and ongoing curriculum reform, increasing access to personalized learning opportunities, iterate improvements to parent engagement and communication. We can now take a moment to continue the conversation and answer questions, and also speak about the experiences in our schools that may underscore the importance of each staffing request.
Questions, Dr. Seuss.
Oh, just a clarification. So, with these requests, so we had a magic wand, we can just satisfy them all, right? We would then have an assistant principal at every school, we would have an ELA coach at every school, a math coach, and a math intervention person at every school, is that right? Okay. And TAs, and then, what about the social workers and the behaviors at every school?
That would put a BSP at every school, and it would also look at supporting, or social work that supports a caseload of around 250 students. So, for example, a school of 500 students would require more than a full-time FTE because their caseload would, you know, be something around 100 to 500, which...
Okay, I just wanted to understand where we are now versus where, okay. Thanks.
So, my question is, so within these, and I really appreciate kind of stepping back and looking at it from this way, this is really useful. How would you prioritize those things in and of themselves? So, if I, if we had, I don't know, you know, as we never do have enough money to do it all at once, so, you know, are full-day TAs for the kindergarten a higher priority than the assistant principals, than the coaches? Like, how does that prioritization work? So, given that we're only going to be able to give some...
The reality in that part of this conversation is that right now, the staffing model, each of our buildings looks a little different because of our size, because of population, existing resources, and funding sources. So, you know, for example, you see two BSPs, that means that two of our schools don't have BSPs. So, that would be, for example, a conversation that I would want to have within our community to figure out what would be the priority. So, and you're probably thinking this way, I don't think one category would be the one priority that we all would have.
Right.
Some of our buildings have building-based coaches, some of us don't. And we're talking more with our teachers around and our families around, that is a priority. So it looks a little different by school.
So, each school is going to give us a prioritized list of what they would like to see out of these?
Yeah.
Good, yeah, good. Because, I mean, otherwise, I mean, otherwise you're left to our devices, which is like, well, let's do all of this because we can, and then that's not what you want, right?
Right. No, our work with Kathy would be to talk about where within this staffing model, we would start to make our requests and prioritize by school, with the ideal that in the next three years, we work towards an equitable model across our seven elementaries.
Right, okay, great, great, thank you.
Yeah, you've got an anxiety-ridden board here because we're looking at huge costs of opening up the Gibbs School as a get-go. That's the starting point we're doing, and we certainly need to prioritize in terms of additional expenses, what is necessary to get that school up and running, because obviously, schools need one of this and one of that, and it's another 500 kids in a school. So, the question that has been coming to our attention more often than anything else is the issue of teaching assistance. Would you comment to us on this discussion of the need, A, for full-time kindergarten teaching assistance, and what do you see is the need for teaching assistance throughout the lower grades?
So, there's substantial agreement, I think, among the seven of us, that the points taken by the two parents who spoke tonight are ones that we would agree with. The programming in kindergarten, which not only extends to the end of the school day, which belies the current model, but also the nature of the programming, it's, as you've all been acquainted with Tools of the Mind, it's asking students to become autonomous, interdependent, collaborative. So it's not just how long the day goes, but what the day looks and sounds like for the children that would require, and does require, every day as many hands as possible. And so, coaching students in that way requires something different than what we anticipated in kindergarten even a few years ago. So I don't think that there's anything but support for the points that you've already heard tonight for kindergarten TAs. Around teaching assistance in general, I think that my experience, and I'll let my friends talk to theirs, but as we increase our expectation for personalized learning and increase our anticipation of every child succeeding and achieving, we have in some ways a model, even in our general ed classrooms, that is a heritage of having a couple dozen students to one grown-up. It's like a doctor seeing 25 patients all at once and being asked to diagnose and treat all of those, because that's the degree of personalization that I think we're asking. So that petitioned for two things, additional people to personalize the learning for students who have the most pronounced need, because we're not going to leave anybody behind, and then also, coaches who have, you know, the way of learning to be better at addressing that demand seems to be more and more by peer learning, by witnessing practice, being, you know, facilitated in a conversation about it. So that's where the coaches' demand comes from, and I know you didn't ask specifically about that, but I think it's related because of just the kind of teaching and learning that we're being asked to provide in schools.
Can I make a quick... This is more in response to the acknowledgement that Gibbs is opening next year, and, you know, the district has lots of financial responsibility to that school. I do know a little bit about that. I think that my position this year has been quite unique in that I get to straddle both places. So, you know, I get to have this elementary lens, and now I also have this sixth-grade school lens. And for me, part of the reason why I was excited to take on this role is the ability to do some nice vertical alignment. And so, we're now building this sixth-grade school where all of the students who are being led in buildings by us are going to land. And we are talking how important it is to have social-emotional learning in front of our work. We're talking how important it is for us to have personalized learning and project-based learning. And that kind of effort, that kind of work, needs to be vertically aligned with the places that they're coming from. And so, I was really happy about the approach this year where we looked at this over a couple of years. Our asks are over a couple of years, because what I see happening here, putting these people into place, assistant principals to support the day-to-day, TAs to support that kind of learning in the classroom, because when you're talking about individualized learning and project-based learning, it certainly takes more than one adult to make that successful. When we're talking about building social-emotional learning and thinking about what kind of communities our kids are in, we want to make sure that we've got the things in place at the ground level, and those kids are up and running before we transition them into a developmentally appropriate Gibbs sixth grade. And then even further, you're going to hear from the middle school people, I think, next week, if I'm not mistaken, how it's going to look as we vertically align from there. And so, I have been able to look at this this year uniquely as sort of stepping stones. And so, I'm really proud of my colleagues here. It's a very hard group to leave, and I'm really feeling like we've put forward a budget that is going to support a district vision. You know, they were really thoughtful about what they chose to put in this budget, and so when you ask, what would we prioritize, I do think we'd be able to come up with a package that looked like, this year, this school needs to work on this piece, this year, this school needs to work on this piece. The following year, we would work on this piece. So by the end of those three years, we would have that equity across the seven elementary schools to leverage this work that the district is doing. It's very exciting.
I hope you don't feel like you're leaving them, you're just engaging...
Oh, no, they would have to do quite a lot to get rid of me.
In a terrific partnership, because now you're going to have to build relationships across the seven elementary schools.
It's a really great opportunity for me personally, but also for the district to have this, so I'm really excited about it, yeah.
And I'll just say that, you know, it's a difficult year, and, you know, we're getting the first piece of the puzzle here, we're going to get more pieces of the puzzle next week, and we're going to have to go and hash this out over the next month or two to figure out how we're going to make it fit. How you open that school will set a tone for teaching and learning in this district, such a key component. That Gibbs School is going to be the keystone of the district. It's going to be holding everything together.
No pressure.
Well, I'm not putting pressure on you.
Just to help you with your thinking on this, and we may be a little biased, but the investments that you make with your earliest learners and the team that's doing that work, I think will have the longest-term impact on the quality of the education.
Oh, don't get me wrong, I understand...
You can tell Dr. Jang where I said that.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm a former Early Learning Center principal, and I'm a district administrator, so when you talk about coaching, that resonates with me tremendously, because I see what happens when you've got a strong leader and great coaches in the building, that's when teaching and learning really blossoms. And I really think that Arlington's fortunate to have such great principals, and I'd like to see you have the coaching support, and I'd like to have, see you have the administrative support, that you're able to spend the time you need to be in classrooms. I understand your work, I get it, I want to support you. Also understand the fact is that, you know, we've got Proposition Two and a Half, we've got a state that has underfunded Chapter 78 historically since 2000. They've underinflated the foundation budget, which is undercut the state funding for public education across the Commonwealth. These are all things that are going on out there that are outside of our world. And so, we're in the middle. We can't grow the pot of money. The people up in Beacon Hill who can grow the pot of money won't. And so, we're stuck in this hideous little box where we're trying to make things work with a very finite set of resources. And my colleagues here are really thoughtful, great people who have different perspectives and different viewpoints on this, but we all come with the same commitment to trying to put together the best package we can to make things work. I'd love to say, well, yeah, this all makes sense, because it does. It does. I'd love to say 1.7 mil, not a problem, here it is. But in this world, I just can't make that commitment to you guys, and we've got to be anxiety-ridden about how we're going to put the puzzle together in order to make it work across all 12, 13 grades plus the early childhood program. So...
That's it.
I want to thank you for your presentation and what you talked about. Thad, I support 100% what you said, the investment at the beginning is the cornerstone. One thing I didn't hear from you, I'm sure you're all aware of it, is the assessment element of the kindergarten program. You can't do it in a group testing, it doesn't exist. And my experience with TAs in the kindergarten is so valuable, with the kindergarten teacher providing a program for the TA to take on with a larger group and then do that individual assessment. It... It pays back the benefits in special ed, education identification early and, uh, I'm su- I support you 100%. I think developing the program over a multi-year thing is, makes sense. And, uh, as Paul just said, wish we could give you everything. My thing, my priority is in the TAs, I'll be honest with you in upfront. I see that as a strong investment, uh, across the board. Thank you.
Okay. Um, hi, thank, sorry. Thank you for your presentation. I wanted to talk a little bit, we had our first budget, uh, meeting this week where we started talking very preliminary numbers. And this is more for the, um, our viewers at home or in the back of your, back wings. As we put together all the numbers, our current obligations, expectations for teachers that we need to add because of increasing enrollment, um, other mandates which are coming up this year, the difference that's coming up that would go for things such as what you list is looking like it's around $600,000 to $650,000. That's to cover everything in the district. Elementary school, middle school, high school, any administration increases, any expansion of programs. So, when we're asking for prioritization, it's for the very real reason that we don't have enough money to go around. And it's not for lack of trying. I've been fighting for years, everyone here has been fighting for years, here in the local level, at the state level, with anyone we can think of, and we go ra- on the street and pick up, pick fights, um, to try and get more money. And we're doing the best we can, but, you know, looking at what's coming down from the federal thing makes me more and more worried about what our current local funding is going to be and how sustainable it is. So, I'm trying to put together not a budget because it's a budget I want, it's a budget that we have. And so, that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to review, just again, more for the listeners at home, is that part of the reason that there is inequity in some of these staffing positions was that last year, there was concern about the increasing enrollments at the different elementary schools, but principals, all of you, made different choices in how you wanted to see that money spent. So, that's why some people have, um, part-time or full-time assistant principals and some people had BSPs because that was the request that we heard from you. So, it's, I just want people to understand at home that we're not sitting here and going, oh, we like this school better than that school. There were choices made. I'm hoping still that we will get some feedback from you about how the, you know, what were the experiences, did any of these work better than the others? So, that gives us an idea and this is the path to follow as we go forward. So, I appreciate that all of these things are very important. I also am here, have heard tons about the TAs and so that's one thing that's kind of on my mind, but I do look to you, whether it's on an individual school basis or as a group or from the administration, that we're going to need some prioritization because we just don't have the money to fund, fund over the, even over three years, you know, that would, if, if, assuming we have kind of similar things phasing this in, you guys would be sucking up the whole chunk of change for three years. And I know our high school has lots of needs too, and the middle school, and the new Gibbs school. So, we're going to need, we're going to need to make some choices and we'd love to have your opinions on it. And if we don't, we're going to make the choices anyway. So, I guess that's it.
To, I, I feel like part of our responsibility in that, I mean, most of us, I think all of us, and I've been, um, at this work for long enough to know that, um, the, we're always working towards something. We're never always quite there, but we're always working towards it. The, at the start of the, the conversation, I think you have those notes in front of you. Part of our responsibility is to share the experience, experience of kids and, and teachers in what is becoming a really pretty complex, um, job for all of us on the ground in our schools. When, um, we are lucky to work with very resilient, determined educators, um, who are both vocal about their experience and, uh, always on a pathway to get better and, and ready for what's next up and from year to year, that's going to change. But what, um, the, the bullets that we, we outlined at the very beginning are what gets, um, are what are being addressed. We're taking what we're, what our schools are resourced with and we're working on pretty complex challenges. When we're all going to prioritize and our priorities are going to be a little bit different than everybody else's and you're left with a big picture to sort through and make sense of. But by giving you this information, it also helps you share the perspective that we have with the people that need to listen, um, who you work with in our towns and our communities to know that when we leave things behind, we're leaving real issues on the table that affect young kids. The, the reality of a classroom now is we can expect about 50% of our students to be what maybe we refer to as typical. And, and that's very different. The, the backgrounds and experiences, the mental health wellness, social-emotional wellness of our kids is really changing. And technology's having a huge impact on, on the way our students come in, both their readiness and both their ability to relate and interact. We're, uh, teachers, teachers assistants are on the, the list of priorities for us as well. We're also filling that list with high-quality, trained, expert teachers. And because our teachers make the difference and really, let's not lose sight that the teaching aid is in the assistance of a teacher doing their very best work for our kids. Um, and in no way, shape or form is that going to change the, the real, a teacher's aid is not going to change the reality of what a classroom looks like at the start of the year. They ideally will give teachers more and more of the freedom to do their work, but we also need to have, at the same time, people around teachers to can coach them up, to keep them positive, to support them, um, to help them do their jobs even better because that, that's the reality. We all need to do our jobs a little bit better. And it's tough. So, however this helps, in you, you shaping your priorities or in communicating with the people that you need to communicate with, that the experience is changing and the way that we resource, our, resource our schools needs to be looked at, particularly with enrollment shifting the way that it's shifted in our town, is very important to us. And, and I think it's, we also need to be transparent and trust each other, that, that we're, um, we're in this together.
Thank you.
I just want to, I, um, I forgot to mention when I was talking that I do really appreciate this because we do, we take this, we take documents like this and what we'll get from middle school and high school next year, uh, next week. And this is part of what we use to pick these fights. And it is very helpful to, for us to have it put out, what the true needs of the school system are. I'm just saying that when a push comes to shove and we actually have to assign things to budget lines, there, there is going to be choices made. Thank you.
Lynn.
Thank you. So, thank you for putting this together. I, I do appreciate the multi-year strategy. I've been advocating for a multi-year plan, um, for a while for, for strategic and, and budgeting purposes because it shows us where you want to go to. And maybe we can't get there all the way, but at least we have a direction to go to and piece by piece, we can get there. So, I appreciate that. And it also prevents the changing from year to year. One year it was kindergarten TAs, last year it was principals, and now we, we have a holistic picture of, of where you want to go. I'd actually like to get a little bit more detail on that as we go forward. Uh, I'd like to see what a staffing plan for at least a typical school, if not the level of each individual school. Because, you know, you've got the principal, assistant principal, one or two social workers, a BSP, a math coach, a reading coach, the reading teachers, the math specialists, uh, the floating TA. So, it's a lot of staff there. And, and I'd like to see what that looks like holistically so we can have a better discussion as to whether really every one of those positions is needed at every school or maybe there'd be some more flexibility. The idea of this year with the BSPs and the assistant principals was, was sort of to be a trial. So, we have part-time assistant principals that take some of the load off from the principals. Is that better than having a BSP that takes the behavioral issues load off of the principal? Are they both really needed? So, as we go through the year, maybe we can get a report specifically on that issue as well.
Yeah.
And then we can put together a, the long-term plan and, and know a little bit more concretely and everybody be on the same page that this is sort of where we want to head to. It might take us five years instead of three, but that's where we want to go. So, that's what I'd, I'd like to see, you know, going forward if we could do that. And then, as everybody else has said, you know, for this year, we, we do need a little bit more granularity, you know, because John has to put together a specific budget with positions, who's going to go where and, you know, what are the highest priorities? So, we'll also need that too. But thank you very much for putting this together, I, I appreciate that. And the other thing, as I said last year, is as you're talking with parents, you know, we get, we get the, the, the request for the TAs, we get the complaints over classes that are 25 or higher, but we have to balance. So, next year, you know, there's, there's several sections that are, uh, have classes that are 25 or 26. Do we allocate another teacher there to get lower class size because that's what the parents want? Or do we give you a building math coach? And if that's, if, if that's what you guys want over the teacher, then we have to find a way to communicate that to the parents so they understand why we're making that decision.
Yeah. You know that the, the size is going to always make an impact, the quality of the programming around the classroom and the impact on that. Stories of the children, you know, in those seats.
Yeah.
You know, all that plays in to how we make our decisions around.
Right, right, right. But unfortunately, we have to make, it would be great to do both. We would love to do both, have small class size and have all this support, but we can't. So, you know, over the last few years, we have been doing a little bit of both, getting more, um, specialists and also more classes, but we, we haven't fulfilled either goals. So, we still have classes that are 25 or higher, quite a few, and we haven't filled all the support needs. So, that's going to continue, but we have to figure out how we strike the balance and communicate that. Thank you.
All right. So, um, my, my question is, I wonder if Kristin Thad could talk a little bit about the assistant principal position and what the added value of that has been? Because I don't think the public is, we voted this last year, got approved, we added those two positions without doing an evaluation of your assistant principals on camera, that's probably not a good strategy, but-
It would be raven glowing in that case, however, I think.
Yeah, but it's kind of like, you know, I think people want to know what the impact has been on teaching and learning in the building because of those two positions and how it would benefit other schools.
Yeah, I can actually use a story from today. Our positions work a little bit differently because my, uh, assistant principal also is the team chair at Hardy.
Okay.
So, she is able to be in the building all day, all week. Um, and we've just figured out a way for her to delineate, you know, her role when she's going to get some time to be, to be running meetings and doing her team chair responsibilities. And we've also linked some of the assistant principal responsibilities under that umbrella. So, some of the things that I would have needed to attend or go to, I don't need to do that anymore. That increases my time on the ground, you know? I can be out and doing evaluations a little bit more, helping teachers, supporting teachers a little bit more. I think today, you know, the story that I can give you today is that when you have, when you have a student, as, as Thad was, was talking about, um, that is coming to your school with specific social-emotional needs, there's a certain way that a leader approaches that. There's a certain way that a leader plugs in all of the people who need to be part of a wraparound team for a student. The leader understands that in a very different way. I have somebody else now that understands that the way that I understand that. So, it's allowed me to plug someone else into some, some more tier-two, tier-three situations. If I'm not able to respond, she is able to respond and it's like we're working with the same leadership lens and brain. That has made a big difference, uh, in, in, you know, taking relief off of the building, um, helping the student, helping families. So, that, that is, that has been, made a big impact. Um, and also, for the staff to see somebody else in that role has made, has made an impact. Uh, you know, our, our situation is a little bit unique where, you know, my staff also knows I will be departing at the end of the year, so, you know, it was also very important, as an offshoot, it's been important for that piece. But that aside, having that leader in the building, someone that's other than, than things that teachers need to talk about, that they feel like they have to tell you, there's another person to do that with. So, the response is more immediate, the support is more immediate. It's a team. It's, it's, it's been very nice to have my little partnership here because, you know, I, I feel like my, it's been more efficient, my vision is more efficient because she shares it and she helps me implement it. So, it has been a wonderful model and having her, I have to be clear, having her there full-time in the building allows us to, you know, she might spend more time one week being assistant principal, but we're going to make sure that the next week, she's getting hers. So, I've been lucky and that, that's flexible for me. Thad can speak to what it's been like to have somebody that's more there in a half-time capacity. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, yeah. Thanks, Kristin.
Well, I think the, um, part of it is having a, a great individual to partner with and do the work and I think we found a great assistant principal and rising leader in Samantha Krostas, who's the assistant principal at Down. You know, from administrative level, support for managing the building, um, was needed and has been important, you know, because we're also a big building with a secretary in the front office. So, having, um, having a partner in that has been wonderful. With primary valuation responsibilities and secondary primary responsibilities, being, you know, um, involved with 40-plus educators, um, doesn't create the most highest quality, um, cycle of feedback and observation. So, having her take and work with groups of educators puts more attention, gives teachers more, um, opportunity to work with leadership and, and administration and gives them access to more resources. Because ultimately, one of our roles is bridging teachers to what they need. So, that, that has been extremely important. We have, you know, Down's been, you know, moving up and moving up and moving up a little bit and we had this, um, great opportunity to introduce 30 new students, first through fifth grade this year, uh, outside of the kindergarten class. We're a very popular area apparently. And the work with students has been pretty heavy at the beginning of the year this year, um, just introducing new students, managing, um, some of the day-to-day that, that comes with kids every morning has been really helpful. Uh, and the other part of Down is we do, we, we house specialized programming, um, for special education and, um, our program has grown a little bit, our, our staff, um, we have a, a complete staff that, um, works for our students in the specialized program, the Supported Learning Center. So, it's been extremely helpful to have, um, administrative support, to be able to give them attention and leadership as well. Um, the, the downside is that kid, I don't have any halftime kids, I don't have any halftime problems, I don't have any halftime, um, projects. So, Samantha works well beyond her halftime status to do what she needs to do for kids, but it is a little bit of a conflict at times. I think it's been a very great, it's been a wonderful investment.
Very good, down. All right. Any comments or anybody wanting to, do you want to make?
We are going to go as a team through the prioritizing process. They know that, this is what we've done in the past. But it's very important for, I think, the, the committee as well as the community to hear, uh, the thoughtfulness of what the needs are at the elementary. These, I know that there's other things that they've left on the table, uh, but these are the ones that have emerged that, that they feel strongly is going to make a significant difference for the children in our district. And, um, we, we are fully cognizant that there are limitations, but at the same time, I think this committee rightfully a number of years ago wants to hear what the needs are and not, you know, just see what we've finally come up with to ask you in a budget year. And it's important for the community to understand that. And despite all of this, they do, every single one of them does such an excellent job in their schools and their leadership with their, with their, uh, their communities. I, I, I think that every, every teacher is very happy to be in their particular school and it says a lot about the leadership that, that they, they have. So, I'm extremely proud of all of them and they know that and, um, we'll be doing some tough work in the next month.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
It's a school night, so you can go over there. All right. Uh, our next presenter, Jason Levy is going to present, uh, so the Arlington Education Association, uh, is asked to present its priorities on both nights. So, next week is the secondary level, elementary, is a middle school and secondary level and they're going to present after the principals. And, uh, tonight, you're going to present, uh, your elementary priorities. You could just introduce them.
I'm Jason Levy, president of the AEA, also sixth-grade teacher at Audison. Me.
Good evening. My name is Christine Brayfield. I teach physical education at Thompson and I'm also the secretary and membership coordinator for the Arlington Education Association.
Great, thank you.
And we are here to present the AEA, um, F, um, to, uh, F-19 elementary budget requests. Additional staffing, full-time TAs in each kindergarten classrooms across district. There is a wide range of school readiness in kindergarten. Some students have never been exposed to any kind of preschool, some come able to read. Kindergarten students require instruction not only in curriculum, but also- Kindergarten students require instruction not only in curriculum, but also on socialization, school routines, and expectations. A regular second adult can facilitate this, particularly because kindergarten class sizes continue to climb. A full-time TA can further help reach the needs of oftentimes intense behavioral, academic, or social-emotional needs of students. And this is why we're also requesting more sped TAs and grade-level TAs. Increase in classroom teachers. Class sizes continue to increase. Current curriculum requires one-to-one assessment, sometimes more than three times a year, in three curriculum areas, which is near impossible task with such large numbers. Arlington Public Schools recognize that the maximum desirable class size is 25. As the demands and needs of students have increased, this number is no longer sufficient. Even if a TA is added, that is only a Band-Aid and will not meet the needs of the students in such large class sizes. Additional special education teachers. Increase in demands of jobs and paperwork can significantly burden teachers in their efforts to serve its students effectively. More special education teachers will also help ensure compliance with state and federal laws. In addition, the district has communicated a desire to push largely inclusion models, which requires more time for consultation and more personnel to effectively implement.
More behavioral specialists, BCBAs. Students with behavioral challenges require the establishment of safety and behavior plans that have to be regularly and consistently implemented and revised. BCBAs are overseeing the behavioral support paraprofessionals, whose numbers have expanded and are now in many elementary buildings full-time. Additional BCBAs would ensure that teams are effectively responding to the social, emotional needs of students. As Arlington's population grows, so does the variety of needs that students have when they enter the school setting. Additional 1.0 FTE social worker at Thompson. Due to the rising number of students with social and emotional needs, the social worker at Thompson requires more support to service the students appropriately. With an increased caseload, the social worker has limited time to offer friendship groups, lunch groups, and other special consultations with students and teachers. In addition to these increased demands, there have become more instances where the social worker is needed to, to support a student immediately. Additional 3.5 FTE team chairs. To meet the needs and demands of increasing job duties and increase of students, at this time, most chairs are split between two buildings. Team chairs who are assigned to only one building will have more direct contact with staff for training purposes. Additional .5 FTE math coach at Dallin to support teachers in their understanding and implementation of the new math curriculum. Two math interventionists to provide support to both teachers and students. Currently, at three elementary schools, there is not an interventionist that supports struggling learners. These two interventionists would begin to bridge the gap.
An additional 1.0 FTE reading teacher to meet the needs of the enrollment growth, 15% from 2010, with no increase in reading teacher FTEs, ensure, in, to ensure equity of access to reading intervention across all seven elementary schools. An additional .5 FTE literacy coach to allow each elementary school a .5 literacy coach to support students in implementation of Common Core reading and writing units of study. Differentiated instruction and to support professional development needs of teachers at grades K through five for district professional development and summer PD needs in ELA. An additional .5 FTE ELL teacher. Due to an increase of ELL students at Dallin Bracket, this position is needed to ensure that students receive services that closer approximate state guidelines. Increase of substitute teachers. This would increase the number of substitute teachers to cover the district needs, which is a major issue. Currently, TAs are being pulled from their assignments with students to cover teacher absences. It would all, oh, sorry. And more specialists to meet the demands of larger enrollment and to allow for more flexibility in scheduling specialists. This would also reduce the number of times two gym classes will be scheduled simultaneously. Technology for classrooms where projectors are being actively used. Speakers for all classrooms with projectors for teachers to be able to use multimedia to enhance the curriculum and to help the needs of all students. Also proper projecting hardware depending on teachers' devices, Chromebooks versus MacBooks, as needed. This includes cords, dongos, dongles. This is so teachers can use their classroom projector. And extra projectors, Chromebooks, MacBooks, and hardware for when devices break. This is to implement parts of their curriculum until they get a replacement, because teachers, with all the new technology over the years, which we're greatly appreciated of, if the technology breaks down, that greatly alters our curriculum, and some teachers will struggle to implement it.
Curriculum and professional development. Increase of opportunities for reimbursement for professional development and courses. The current allocation for course reimbursement does not cover the needs and requests of teachers in order for us to stay current in content and pedagogy. Salary. Appropriate contingencies for all staff wages. An increase in salaries to make it comparable to surrounding communities. This is needed to attract more and better qualified TAs and substitute teachers. It is also needed to attract and retain all teachers and administrators. The Arlington Education Association and elementary teachers would like to thank the school committee for providing us the opportunity to present the 2018-19 elementary budget requests.
Thanks very much. I'm going to open up the questions. Anybody have a question? Yep, Jennifer.
So this is a really big list. Is it prioritized?
No, for this reason. As, as president of the AEA, I can't say, do we need TAs and kindergarten teachers, and then tell the ELL students who need a .5 ELL teacher that, no, we're prioritizing the TAs for kindergarten. So that's one reason why we could not do that. But we do understand the restraints of the budget.
Lynn.
So the one thing I think is conspicuously absent, given the principals' presentation, is the assistant principals. Is there a reason for that that you know of, or is it just different priorities?
I think it's different priorities. I also think where you, while you have it in two buildings, since the other five buildings don't have it, and there's a lot of needs with class sizes, I feel that they, that either whether it's TAs, classroom teachers, or more special ed teachers is probably more of a priority than an assistant principals.
I'll also, can I add my opinion? I'll also add that I do believe that a lot of the schools are different, where a social, full-time social worker at Thompson may be more beneficial than a halftime assistant principal who would only be there for two or two and a half days out of the week. We are in need of a full-time social worker. So I, I do, I'm sharing my opinion as a staff member from Thompson, but I do believe that all schools are different.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, this is really helpful. Thanks, and thanks. It looks like you guys put a lot of time into it and surveyed a lot of people, so thanks for doing that. Thank you. Okay, thanks so much. All right. Now we have Marilyn Salivas for the discipline report. I just want to say at the start that Kathy and Marilyn and I met before the meeting, and one suggestion we had was after this presentation, we might, if the committee accepts, we might refer this for further conversation to the curriculum instruction and assessment subcommittee. Paul, you paying attention?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have a meeting set up yet?
No.
We've got three dates ready to go. We just have to confer after the meeting to make informed.
Okay, very good.
So what, what this is, is a listing of, a summary of the suspensions that happened across the district this past year, not this, not the current year. So we're looking at 2016, 17 suspension data.
So we're looking at 2016, 17 suspension data and across the district. Now, we had suspensions at the high school, the middle school, and one at the Hardy Elementary School. I didn't give any more details on that because there was one issue with two kids, and that was it for suspensions. At the high school, we had 70 suspensions that were made up from 45 students. So some of those students had multiple issues. We broke down for male and female. At the Audison, there were 36 suspensions involving 24 students. And, you know, eight females and 16 males. When you look at the whole district-wide, you know, most of the suspensions were at the high school level. And this is a very, you know, high-level chart, you know, 70, 36, 2. So at the high school, we did look at the breakdown from ethnicity. And of the 70 suspensions, 42 of them were from white students, three Asian, I think that says 13 black. And what we did with the, rather than have 65 different skinny little pie pieces, we split the mixed ethnicity between mixed Hispanic and mixed non-Hispanic, which is the way the state of Massachusetts does it. So 11 mixed Hispanic and one mixed non-Hispanic suspension. Now, of the 45 students, this is how it breaks down for male and female. And things are, you know, when you look at the population of the district and you look at the, the breakdown of the students that were suspended, it's pretty similar. You know, most of the students that come to Arlington High School, I almost said Watertown High School. Arlington High School are white students, and the majority of the suspensions were with white students. And we broke down the suspensions at the middle school the same way. And again, the, the majority with white students. And the, the male-female is pretty well split, and the, um, the breakdown is the same with that. So this is a very high-level, you know, I'm at the end. I didn't keep up. It's a very high-level look at what happened with suspensions last year. Does anyone have any questions? Is there something more that you'd like to?
Kirsty.
Okay. I have a question, but it's more for Dr. Bodie. So when I saw this in our chart, I mean, when I saw this in Novus, I was looking at it. When I look at school, student suspension data, especially now, the things I'm especially interested in are any racial disparities in the suspension rate. And I didn't find that this information gave that to me. I was able to pull data from DESI about the, our enrollments for last year and did some calculations. And what they show is that for a black student, African-American, it would, they were almost over 10 times as likely to be suspended as a white student.
Mm-hmm.
At the high school, they were over six times as likely to be suspended. First, I am concerned that this information didn't come out in our report. I think if we're going to talk about students, students' suspension data, we need the whole picture. We need to know what's going on. We need to drill down and understand differential rates and how, whether they're equal or not. And then we need to hear, how are these being looked at? What's being done to understand why is there such a disparity? Is it because we have a very unusual population of kids? Or are there other things going on? And then what are we going to do about it? So I'm glad to hear that this is going to get referred to curriculum and assessment. I think that I'd like to see this data come back and have the actual, you know, I just did this in an hour. And I don't know that I'm pulling exactly the right numbers and comparing, but I'm reasonably sure from what you've said. And we need a lot better discussion about this, and I would like it to, to see it on in a future agenda. I don't know in how long, a month or something. But I'm, I'm frustrated because this is a current hot topic that we know is a problem. And just doing rough number calculations on this, I can see it looks like we have a problem here, and we aren't discussing that at all.
Okay. Do you, are you, do you want a response from anyone first?
No.
Kirsty, do you want a response first?
No, I mean.
No.
It's, if they wish, if Dr. Bodie wishes to respond.
Well, this is something we certainly are looking at. And one of the questions that, that I had asked Marilyn when we were discussing this, I don't know, a week or so ago, was in her analysis, one of the issues is, is there a disparity also in the, the suspensions? In other words, there's a differential in the suspensions due for the same, for the same issue, whether it's possession of marijuana. That's actually a very common one. And is there among the different ethnic groups? Because that is a sort of a, that's a not, that's, that's a very concrete issue that a high school principal and middle school principal face. And I, I'd like Marilyn to talk a little bit about, because she's really spent quite a bit of time on this. And in fact, we have a lot more data, and that's why we suggested, actually, I think it's, it's a topic that would be best, you know, looked at more, more deeply at a subcommittee level. And so that is actually our proposal, is that we do that, and there, we can give you more data. But I'd like her to respond, if you would, about what your analysis was in terms of that question.
Well, again, one of the, one of the things we did is we looked at each of the offenses that kids got in trouble for. And if the, the punishment matched among the different people that got, you know, if, if 10 kids were smoking pot, did 10 kids get suspended for five days? And we did find that other than a couple of occasional places where some housekeeping could have been better, it was correct. What we were looking at was the days of suspension and were the students suspended as a, an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension. This report, like the, this report from last year, the example that I was given, is only looking at, it's grouping together the in-school suspensions and the out-of-school suspensions. It's if the kids were taken out of the classroom. And I did, you know, put together some detailed information that we would like to look at more closely with both the principals or who is in charge of discipline in the schools. I'm still relatively new here, so I'm not sure who exactly does what in each of your And just to make sure that the accounting is really correct. But it looks on the surface like if you have one offense, the same. But it looks on the surface like if you have one offense, the same punishment is lauded out.
All right. This, also, this data is going to be looked at very closely with the principals as we go forward. It's been, you know, just compiled quite recently. So you're getting the, you know, the first overview. But we're taking this very seriously. We want to look at it. Particularly, I think, the issue that you raise has a lot about, to do with unruly behavior. You know, is there, are some students called to consequences by race more than other students for behaviors that might feel a little bit more subjective? And of course, this is all in the context of the work that we're doing, social-emotional work in our schools. So anyway, Mr. McNeil also had a comment he wanted to make, if it's all right with you.
Yep. So this is part of, if you remember my report on the civil rights, this is one of the areas where we're going to develop a plan. And I've already met with Marilyn in order to look at ways that we can present the discipline data to principals on a monthly basis. So that they're able to look at, you know, be able to get that data and disaggregate it and have conversations with faculty and staff. And so looking for reasons. So we're also not only looking at the consequences, but we're looking at referrals as well, like the referral process and making sure it's consistent across all the elementary schools and looking at the middle school and the high school. And that'll also help us to understand if students are being recognized or identified for specific behaviors and if there's a disparity between the various racial groups. So not only looking at the consequences, but looking at the referral process. And then we can, after we get that data, we can look at ways that we can be proactive. And that goes in line with our work around cultural competency and implicit bias and making sure that we're, we're looking at students and there's equity in that area.
Bill?
I have the same frustration that Dr. Ampe stated. I use the total population numbers to come up with almost the exact same percentages that you did. This was an issue a year or so or two. And all the things I'm hearing tonight were the answers we heard then that we were going to be doing to remedy. I think one of the things, and you addressed it a second ago in your answer, is the different types of suspensions, in-house or out. I think without getting into the specifics and identifying a child, which is, we can't do, I think it's important to also know the balance of special education students and things of this nature. Is it related to that? How, I need the district to look at that. We may not be able to look at that as a public thing, but that's an important thing on suspensions. The, the housekeeping part of it, I'm very, very concerned for us to know about this. We have residential houses, or whatever the term is, with students that come in and they're flowing in and out of our district a lot. That was a reason given for some of the suspensions in the past. It's important for us to put all this in context, but it's also important for us to understand, and I appreciate what Rodrick just said, these are the steps that are needed. But these are also the steps that we were told that were going to take place the last time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I appreciate all the conversation that's gone on so far. I think this is really important to have. I just want to point out what everybody's started pointing out is that we need to sort of pull apart this data a little bit more. We need to understand how many of these are in district versus out of district? How long are they? Are we decreasing the length of time that we're suspending students? What we've learned in society is how devastating certainly an out-of-school suspension can be for student learning. And so are we making progress here? Are we decreasing the incidences of that? We know we have a racial disparity problem. We've had that for years. Are we making progress? You know, and again, we're not alone in these problems. It's not like Arlington's uniquely bad. Every district is facing these things. So we're all talking about it. But, but what's the trend here? Are we making progress? Are we sort of staying the same? And that's not, we don't get that in the data here. I know that there was data presented last year. I didn't go back and look at that data. I would be able to maybe tease out some of the stuff, but there isn't enough information here to do that. So, so I think whether that's in this committee or a subcommittee, I think that's a value, and certainly with the administration, that's, I think that's a valuable, that's the kind of information we need.
Paul?
Yeah, I mean, it does, the numbers don't seem to be that far off the 15, 16. At least the patterns seem to be pretty similar. The 15, 16 is presented on the state website. The interaction between special ed, ethnic and racial minorities in group home situations is certainly a question. But, you know, when you, when you've got a relatively small number of suspensions, it's easy for one or two children to move the percentages way off. But that said, is that we're a 70 some odd percent white district. And, you know, 74%, 73, 72, depending where we are this year. And only 6% Hispanic. And the Hispanic numbers seem to be way off. We're 3.7% African-American. And those numbers seem to be off. And if, if there's something that we're not culturally competent at in terms of relating to the students, which allows situations to escalate to the point where those students are more likely to encounter an issue where they might face a suspension, that's sort of the issue. The issue isn't if you do this, is the discipline the same? The issue is, are you more likely to be pushed into a situation where the relationship deteriorates between the school and the child to the point where those behaviors are more likely to occur? If, that we're not connecting to the families, that we're not connecting to the student, where we're not connecting in a culturally competent way? And that's sort of the underlying question we have. Not if the child does X, is, are they the same likelihood of being suspended? It's, do, are we intervening so that a child isn't getting to that point?
Well, that is certainly something that we are talking about, looking at. I think one of the reasons I asked that question is that when we looked at CR, the data before, there was some, a little bit, certainly more than now, a little bit inconsistency in terms of the days suspended to the particular issue at hand. So I think that that's, that has all been corrected out for the most part. But to your point, I think that that's exactly right. I mean, that's one of the urge for the work that we're doing. In what way does implicit biases affect a response to a particular situation? And we're looking at it, that's what I can say. And this, as to Mr. Haner's point, yes, but that's exactly one of the things that's happening is that you have to go deep into this. In terms of this work, it's, it's, besides looking at the data, that's part of it for sure. But the real work is the work in terms of our own cultural competency and awareness. And we certainly have made great strides in that area. And will continue to do so.
I just want, I just want to be clear, is that I want us to be a leader in this. Like, you know, the fact that other districts are having this issue, I'm not in a position from my work to start holding things up. Because I think that Lowell's numbers are worse. And I think that in terms of relationships with the Hispanic community, I think Lowell's got some real challenges. So I can't say that, I'm not calling us out. I'm saying, this is, this is a great district. And we pride ourselves in the way we treat our children and relate to the community. And I want to make sure that every child walking through the door, wherever they were born, whatever they look like, whatever their disabilities, challenges are, whatever their talents are, they're going to have the same shot at moving forward. And we're going to do everything we can to make them successful. And a suspension is not success.
Kirsty?
I just wanted to speak, I understand the idea that this would be something that's best taken up by a subcommittee and discussed. And I agree with that. However, I do feel it's a big enough issue and, I mean, important enough issue that it should come back to the full committee and be presented here because I feel like right now we were just given the tip of the iceberg. And we need to see what the shape is and what we're going to do and how we're going to go around it instead of just cruising straight at it.
Yep.
Just, just like to add, from my perspective, I want to thank you. I think you did a good job. I don't want you to feel, from my perspective, that I'm dumping on you. I do appreciate what you got and you did what was asked. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, one, so I want to just make sure I'm clear on the numbers. There were 70 suspensions last school year, 45 students were suspended. You know, my own experience is that anyone running a school is, you know, the last thing you want to do is suspend a kid. So, you know, most headmasters, most principals, that's the last thing you want to do. Trying to get to, and also you'd like to keep the suspension in school if you can. So, you know, you're kind of, oftentimes, you're forced to suspend someone because there really is no other choice based on the infraction and the rule. It's, you know, it's, that's, there's really no, it's really, it's not, it's not, it's not an arbitrary thing. So I think it's important for people to understand that it's not necessarily an arbitrary decision. It's a, it's an infraction. It's a violation of the rule. Sometimes it's best, though, to understand all the things that led up to the suspension. The culture, the actions of the student, the support she received or didn't receive. So I just want to keep that in context. If I have the numbers right, 45 kids suspended, we're talking about 3.5% of the high school, 3.5% of the middle school, something like that, 2%, 3%. Have I got the numbers right? So it's a, we're talking about a small percentage of students. And we're talking about rule infractions and we're talking about situations in which the head of the school had no choice or the vice principal. So I just want, unless I'm, unless I'm, unless you're, is there another interpretation? Or no?
Listen to my father and keep my mouth shut. But I think that we need to look at what's happening before the suspension.
Right, yeah. That's what you always do in a school. Anytime when we're faced with suspending a kid, that's the first, last question. So what happened to get us to this point? You know, what hap, and I'm assuming that that's happening at the, at the, at the high school level and at the middle school level. There's a conversation going on, what, how would, how do we get to this point where I only have, as the head of the school, I have only one choice, which is to suspend him because he, based on the facts, he broke the rules. So that's, is that?
Yes, but it's, I think when you say break the rules, people think, well, they chewed gum in class.
Yeah, right. Well, it's, that's a serious, it's a serious thing.
You know, if a student brings a knife to school.
Yep.
Or a weapon to school, there is a suspension consequence.
Right.
If a student is in possession of marijuana or using marijuana on school grounds, there is a consequence, and it is suspension. So those are things that really make up a good bulk of this. It's not, it's not, you know, you talk back to the teacher and therefore we're suspending you. Those aren't, that's breaking the rule, but that's not what's, I mean, I will say there's degrees of that, for sure.
Right.
And I'm sure those working in schools understand that. But this is, most of these fall into some pretty serious areas.
Yes. Okay. That clarifies, I think it gives some context and some reality. Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to speak to your point that it's only a few percent. It's true, it's only a few percent if you look school-wide, but if you're an African-American student at Odison, it was 12% who were suspended. If you're an African-American student at the high school, it was 17% who were suspended. And those, to me, are not small numbers. And it's, I'm concerned.
Well, there was six students out of the population in Odison that had suspensions. Those six students had a total of nine suspensions between them.
I was just doing, doing the number, not, not the number of suspensions. I did, I did the, the actual student number. I wasn't doing individual suspensions. So, so yeah, so that would make the number go up even higher.
Yeah, so the, the way an educator would analyze this is what led up to the suspension? You know, what are, what's the context here? How do we get to this point? That's the first question. That's the question, how do we get to this point? And so, and we have to be careful about talking about how we got to this point because we're talking about six kids once, that's, that gets us pretty close to.
Right.
Privacy issues. So I think we have to stop. Okay. So we'll bring this to a subcommittee?
Yep.
And we'll let a subcommittee talk about it without, without.
Report back.
And report back to us, okay?
Do you want a motion?
All right, thank you. What's that?
Do you want a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
I move that we refer to the CIAA Subcommittee, the issues we've discussed regarding the discipline report.
Second.
And reporting back by, say, the January board meeting?
Second meeting in January.
Second meeting in January, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marilyn, good to see you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
All right, just a few things tonight. Limited because of my voice. But I want to, to give a building update, as I do all the time. And I think the most immediate thing is that last night we had our first of three parent forums for the Gibbs School. It was, it held at Stratton and it was very well-attended. And I appreciate that Dr. Seuss came, Mr. Haner, Mr. Cardon, and Mr. Thielman all came to lend their support. We had probably about two, close to 200, because I know there were 160 seats on those round tables and people were standing. So it was well-attended and we had a, an agenda that went through a whole wide range of topics. And the questions that followed were wide-ranging as well, transportation questions, curriculum, what were some of the terms, the feedback we had after. We have to be very careful to not use acronyms, become part of our, you know, our general language. But, you know, we had a chance to be able to show people the renditions, that, the present, and the floor plans, because one of the issues was the fifth cluster. And interestingly, after the meeting, somebody said, well, I'm still not sure what a cluster is. So I think that's a, you know, a good, good feedback so that we'd be a little bit more careful about defining these things as we go forward. But that presentation is now on the website. And you can, and one of the nice things, if you want to look at that, you'll get to see some of the newest renditions. They're computer-generated, so the color is a little bit more, probably not exactly how they will be, but you get a pretty good idea of what it looks like. And on our website, under, you know, facilities, there is a, an area for Gibbs. And we're going to, we continue to populate that with most recent documents. And Ms. DeFrancisco, last night, also spoke that she's going to start putting some articles there for parents to be able to read. I think, and I hope that the committee understands those who are there in particular, how important it was to have someone internal being part of the planning process. This is a very complex thing to open a school. It just is. And you can't hire somebody in the spring of this year to be ready to open a school because this has required numerous meetings, meetings with the staff at Odison. And this is, the success of this is everybody working as a team, but also having the leadership that's necessary. And I think that, I don't even think last night's presentation completely made clear the complexity of all that's involved in this. And there's still a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And one big area is still on the parking lot completely is what the extracurriculars will look like.
The questions that she referred to the person that was taking notes, will those be put up online? Because a lot of people.
Yeah, they could be.
I got a couple of questions afterwards. How are we going to hear about it? Is she just going to go through it at the next meeting? It would be nice to see it.
I will give you a copy. In fact, I just got.
No, no, mainly for the, for the public.
To summarize it, summarize notes, sure.
Those questions. She did a very good, I'd like to commend Dr. Bodie and Ms. DeFrancisco for the job well-done. They kept trading off even though you had the cold and everything. But she handled the audience extremely well, very professionally, and tried to give everybody an opportunity to speak.
And that's how we'll go do it in future forums as well, try to get the presentation very succinct and then open it up.
Yeah. So I meant to print out, I have a copy of the invitation that was sent out, and I didn't print it out, hold up. But, so I think I'm a typical parent. I have a couple of kids, they go to sports. I couldn't go last night because I had to be driving them around to sports. And I think the invitation would have been greatly. And I think the invitation would have been greatly improved by explaining in it how people who can't attend, like me, how they would have an opportunity to provide comments, idea of feedback on the plans, that they'll be able to get more information, that there'll be other forums coming up. And I think this is actually true pretty much of everything we do. We should be assuming there are people who are greatly interested, who cannot make whatever it is we're doing...
Right.
And be explaining to them as we go along, this is how you can participate too.
Yes, well, that's a very good point. ACMI came last night, I didn't know they were going to come, but I was glad that they came. And that was terrific because they're going to, they're going to, I don't think they're going to show the whole piece, but they're going to edit it, and it will be on in about two weeks. So, when, I know when it's going to be available, I'll send it out to, to you as well, to you as well as the fifth-grade parents, because I think it'd be nice to, to see that.
I think we should let the whole town know. I mean, though, all the parent, not, not just fifth grade, because, you know...
Just send out all parents, okay.
Were very interested.
Would I, go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah, thank you. So, when you do that, the other suggestion that I would have is, there, there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity for feedback at the session, it was mostly questions and answers. So, I would ask that, as you did with the redistricting process, to set up a mailbox, an email box, where people can email comments or concerns, following the viewing of the, first recommend that they view the presentation, and then if there are additional comments or concerns or feedback, this is the mailbox to send it to. Or find some other way to get feedback, because you presented a lot of things as, as, like the schedule and things, as saying, well, these aren't things that really have, are appropriate for feedback, but, but they might be. You know, you heard some feedback about the language program, people may have strong thoughts about some of the things that you're considering, and, and I think we should find a way to, to accommodate that.
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
I, I think it'd be fine to try to figure out some way to set up a comment. There's absolutely no way, frankly, that I could ever respond to all the comments that would come in. And there would have to be an understanding that this is, not that I wouldn't read them... Right.
Right.
But, response level would be not possible.
So, what I was going to suggest is the woman who's taking notes, perhaps, rather than just the notes online, it could be formatted as an FAQ.
Mm-hmm.
So, these are the questions, and you and Kristen can edit it and make it clean, so it's, because I think that, the flow, the questions actually kind of, that gave, that gave a lot of good information to people.
Yep.
So, be good to capture that, yeah.
So, I had one other comment, looking, I looked at the presentation, which I'm glad you supplied to us. I didn't see anything out about special education and how the transition, adding the multiple transition aspect to the school experience of these kids is going to be handled. And I remember back when we were making the decision, that was the group that we're really concerned about, have, going to a sixth-grade model. And I just, I'd like us to have an update on how we're trying to make this an easier and better school experience for kids, given the concerns of the education, the special...
We already have a sixth-grade transition model, which has been, it's pretty, pretty extensive, evolving over a week of staff meetings and then subsequent follow-up with parents. So, the fifth to sixth-grade transition would be similar to what it currently is because they're still moving from fifth to sixth grade. The question would sim, would be, you know, how do we replicate that from sixth to seventh, which would be a similar process as far as transition and sharing information? I think the structure and design of the sixth-grade school is what is really different and actually more supportive than the, what we have traditionally had as far as the cluster models and, you know, rotating around the building. So, I think that pieces it, but I don't anticipate a different transition process, per se, it would just mean more transition meetings.
I'm, I'm thinking back to when the discussions were being held about whether we wanted to have two middle schools or, or sixth grade only, and that the special education staff came down almost unanimously against a sixth-grade-only thing. And the, what I understood the reasoning was, was concern about multiple transitions. And so, this is something that I'm trying to make sure that we're keeping in mind, because even with what you're saying is a better school model, at the time when we were making decisions, that was not the opinions of the people who were talking to us.
I mean, I think, as we continue, we have the, the leadership team has been identified for the new Gibbs, and the membership is being, or it's continuing to be identified, but they've had multiple meetings, and I think they have more involvement in the process. So, last year, when there was no idea or conceptualization of what it was, and the thought of just slicing off the sixth grade and replicating a sixth grade over at Gibbs was kind of what was in people's minds. I think now, as they work with Ms. DeFrancesco and the rest of the team, I think people have had a voice. The other mention was that Ms. DeFrancesco did come to the CPAC as well to present on that. I know that, you know, that doesn't get as much, as, as much attendance, but she did meet with them as well to solicit feedback. And so, I mean, I feel pretty confident that the educators who are going have a strong voice in the process, have been involved in the process. And so, I mean, certainly, as we continue, I think opportunities to hear from them, you know, would be valuable, just as we're hearing from the other members of the leadership team. But I, I think the transition concerns that we have would be for all students, not just for special ed students, and I think that's being part of a thoughtful process that's being included in the planning.
So, the, the issue was that now children, the average child, has two transitions, from elementary school to middle school, from middle school to high school. And so, the concern that was expressed a year, a year or so ago in the decisions, now they're going to have a third transition. And so, I think it's just, maybe just talking as you did, and that could be actually in an FAQ, it's just, you know, we're conscious of the fact there's three transitions now, and this is what we're going to do to, to, to support that. So, yeah.
What, what's missing is you have to plan for the additional transition. So, you have to develop a program for the transition from Gibbs to Odison. You have an extra year to do that, because there's no transition next year, but there's going to be another transition, and you're going to have to figure out, are there going to be school visits, is there going to be, you know, what, what's going to happen for that transition?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, we anticipate a similar process that we already have in place for going from middle to Odison, but now you're going to do that for fifth and sixth, then you'll have to do it again at sixth to seventh. I mean, I think that piece has been very successful. I think some of our, Mr. Levy and some of the middle school teachers can talk about that students who come in through special ed are often well-known in advance, are connected to staff, have typically more opportunities to meet with staff, visit the school and whatnot prior to coming in. So, it's more a matter of, I think, looking for that second opportunity when they're going from sixth to seventh grade to do it again.
Again.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that's, we want an assurance that's going to take place.
That will take place.
Yeah. Jennifer.
So, the meeting last night was great. I thought really positive, parents felt positively about it. What I'm looking for is what do the next few months look like in terms of what is, and we've talked about this several times in the committee, what are the decision points? You know, when, when are there additional parent meetings? Also, what are, when are there additional meetings with staff? Like, what kind of decisions are they making? Just having a, an idea of when those decision points are, just sort of a calendar of, so which is what, you know, the thing that was in the evaluation and, you know, that we've sort of requested several times.
Well, let me just take the example of one thing, which is the schedule. If I had given you a calendar of decision points...
Right.
It would, I'd be off.
No, I get it, but, I get it. But, so, we, so we have a, a rough idea, right? I mean, and it doesn't have, certainly it doesn't have to be like April 2nd, I mean, obviously, that's silly, but, but just a rough idea of, because I know you've expressed several times that there is a, an order to this, right? So, this decision has to get made before this decision. So, I would just like to have a better understanding of what that order is. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and, and as we, as we get a better picture of that, I do think we need to have Ms. DeFrancesco come present here. I know four of us were there last night, but three of you weren't. There was very helpful information. I mean, we are developing really a new program, whether it's something that we need to approve or not, I don't know, but it's certainly something we should hear about here at this committee. Once we have a little bit more detail about what the schedule's going to be like, what a project block means, and things like that, I, I do think she should come here and present.
That's, that's fine, and we can, we can work on when that would be. I mean, in terms of actually what will be the next thing is, we've just got to get the schedule decided. That is first, we've, we were able to figure out staffing pretty much, it's not perfect, but in terms of FTEs, but that is key. But then, there's going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot of parallel things. There's going to be people working on projects, for sure. Down the road, we're going to have to start extracurricular, and then, of course, transportation's going to be an issue that we need to look at. We don't have the date set, but it's roughly going to be in February. My guess, it'll be probably after the vacation, but it could be right before, but it's going to be in that timeframe, and then we'll have one later in the spring as well.
Yeah, Bill.
A couple of parents going along with what Cassie mentioned, asked if it's possible to do it on a Saturday. Just a thought.
Oh. Hadn't told you that, as opposed to an evening?
I know, right.
It's hard to get...
I know.
It's really hard.
I'm passing on, I'm passing it on. There's no...
All right.
I'm not supporting it or opposing.
Jason, you got a thought on that? The Saturday meeting?
Take the fifth, Jason.
Okay. High school building project.
The high school building project, that also is moving along, and now it's going to start really feeling like we're moving very quickly, because there are going to be timelines. The educational plan is due at MSBA mid-April, and so you back that out, there's a lot of things that need to occur. The preferred option for the school also needs to have, has a due date in August, actually July, because it has to be a certain number of weeks ahead of time, so you back that out.
Could you just explain what that means, preferred options?
Well, there, when, when you enter an MSBA project, partnership, they ask you to look at the three possible options.
Options for building design?
For the, well, not the design so much, but whether you're going to have a new school, renovation, addition, or renovation. You look at them, and you need to do due diligence about all of those. And so, in fact, at the next building committee meeting, we're, we're looking right now at parcels of land in town that could potentially be a site. And then, we'll have to do an analysis of that to make sure that we do due diligence on it. The MSBA has as their guidelines for a high school roughly twenty-five acres. So, but...
You know something we don't know about that town?
You're sitting around, you're in your backyard. Where's that at?
There, there, yeah. Your rock?
This is about twenty, this school and the fields is above twenty-two acres.
We don't have twenty-five here either, no.
So, but we have to do due diligence on that, so that's going to be going along. There also, we need to create the educational plan, though, having said that, the high school's been working on their thoughts about education and the vision of the future for a couple of years. One of the things that we are going to do, and we're going to, we will be able to give you probably next week, sort of a, a snapshot of all of the meetings and public forums that are going to occur. One of the things that we came out of, you know, some, some good conversation at the building meeting the other night, we've sort of taken a step back and look at, you know, what, what maybe should be the first public forum, and we're actually planning one on January 4th, which will be a public forum for people to come to hear a presentation about where we are, what's going to happen, what happens, and then also to get some feedback loop for them to give to the committee as we go forward. And then, there's going to be educational visioning plan. That is not about buildings, is not about the design of buildings, it's not about preferred options, it's really about what do we see education looking like, what we want it to look like in the high school now and in next ten years, and possibly even longer than that. What are the priorities? So, that will be occurring as well. So, a lot of this communication is going to be going out, and it is going to, what seemed like we were going pretty slowly for a while, is all of a sudden going to feel like we're really moving very quickly.
So, I want to add just two, two things. So, Adam, the town manager, Kathy and I met yesterday and today, just to kind of get a, get the process going the way it should go. So, we have one meeting I want everyone to please put in your calendars, Thursday, January 4th, 7:00 PM, not 7:30, because we got to change it.
We changed seven.
We got to move that to, 7:00 PM, and this is going to be sort of the public kickoff of the building project. The tentative way, we're talking about, we're going to run this by the building committee, which is meeting on the 19th, and I want to make sure everyone's in agreement on this process, but the, but the, what we're thinking, and it's going to be, you know, I want the building committee to weigh in on it, is that we would start with sort of a presentation, the project team, this is what the project's going to look like, this is what the process is, and then we would have at least forty-five minutes of people at tables, where they would get a chance to give their suggestions for what they want in the high school. Four questions, I can't remember what they are, but one is, you know, what do you like about the high school, what do you want in it, what are our opportunities, and there's a fourth one. And so, the table, people at the table get a chance to do that, one person at the table get up and report what the group talked about, and then, so it'll be a way to kick off the public process. The second thing is the school committee gets two or three people who want to be in the educational vision, educational vision committees.
Vision committee.
It meets three times, it's during the school day from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. You've got to commit to go during the school day. And so, there's some of us who have some flexibility in the day, and there's some of us that just don't. So, could you, why don't you do this? Why don't you look at the schedule? We're, we're going to have it at the building committee meeting next week, the 19th, and look at that schedule when it comes out, and just let me know if you can do it. Jennifer, Bill, and Kersey.
Yeah. I get it. I get it.
Where is that, the one on January 4th going to be in this room?
Oh, no, January 4th is at, is at the, at the town hall.
Town hall, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that one, I'm sorry, town hall.
That's okay.
And so, we're planning on, yeah, we're planning on a hundred people, I don't know if it, if we can get more than we, right now, it's a town hall.
Yeah.
Okay? We do not have a snow date. We probably should...
It's not going to snow.
No, no.
I promise.
So, yeah, you know, Kersey, Bill, Jennifer, if you can think about the other thing.
Yeah, so, you'll know the dates in a couple weeks.
Lynn, if you're going to be available, let me know, or, I mean, if you're, so, I mean, I think we can, if you want to have, I think we're unlimited in school committee members?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's a way for us to get involved. Yeah, next building committee meeting is the 19th, everyone's welcome to come, yeah.
So, are you including the preschool in the visioning process?
No. This is the high school. Most educators on this are going to be high school teachers and maybe some middle school teachers as well.
So, how will the preschool needs be included in the, in the educational vision?
It's not in the educational vision, this is the educational vision for the high school. The, what the preschool needs are is about the space and where they're going to be, and they will definitely be involved in that.
Okay. I've, I've seen the preschool portion in other educational plans, so, maybe because it's part of the early, the early education program, or...
Send that to us. Could you send that to, what, what district?
I'd have to check, I've looked at a bunch of them.
All right, I'd like to see that.
Maybe, maybe where it's going to come in is we have a child study program, and so Maybe where it's going to come in is we have a child study program, and so that link between the two will probably, will be in the high school plan. This is not a visioning about what the preschool's going to do in their program and so forth, but the connection to the high school, yes, absolutely.
Anything else in the report, Kathy?
Just one thing, and that is to, well, we've sent out a press release about this, I do really want to acknowledge AEF. We, AEF has committed awarding $200,000 over the next three years to support the Arlington Public Schools Safe and Supportive Initiative. And this is a wonderful gift, and we will be reporting out to them, as well as to yourselves and the community, as to how that money will be expended. And one of the things I know, that a big chunk of at least the money for this year will be used in, is providing all staff with professional development around mental health first aid. It's an, it's a full-day training that goes on, and the administrators are the first that are going to participate. We have dates that we've set up, they're almost set up, in January, and then we're going to, we're going to have a process, but we can probably, I think the goal this year is to have about 300 teachers trained, and that's a significant number.
Jeff? And Amy Spears is going to be here next week, right Karen?
Yes.
Explain the AEF grant, yeah.
Question, Superintendent, searches for the Hardy and Addison principal?
Ah, thank you. We are doing interviews this month. We have two nights set up for interviews for the OMS principal. Yes, was it the other, I forget which day it was, the other day, Tuesday, I was over at Addison to talk with the 7th and 8th grade teachers about, you know, what are they looking for in a new principal? And I had contacted OPAC to have an opportunity to meet, that seemed like to be the best forum to work with and through, and so that is set up next on the 12th. And there's so many things happening on the 12th, and I'm hearing predictions of snow, like plowable snow.
Those predictions are sort of vanishing.
Oh, I hope they vanish. We have so much going on. In fact, that's one of the first nights of the OMS interviews, that evening. So, and then the, the OPAC, so, yes, I'm soliciting input, which will then be shared with the search committee. And we'll have, what will end up happening in that search is that, once we have three finalists, four finalists, we will be scheduling days in January for all-day interviews, well, and also, you know, having them be at the school.
Hardy?
Okay, Hardy is getting posted?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're posting Hardy tomorrow, and then we'll be collecting resumes from now through, you know, shortly after the new year. And then, convening the interview committee with teachers and administrators and parents, and Mr. McNeil will be leading that interview committee, and will be scheduling interviews sort of later in January or early February.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Theo, you got any question for the superintendent? It's your chance.
Uh...
Good, good, okay, good. Okay. So, we're right on time, 8:20 on the dot precisely. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of regular school committee meeting minutes dated 11/16/2017, and approval of warrant number 18106 dated 11/16/17, total amount $312,625.05. Motion by Jennifer, second by Cindy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, subcommittee and liaison reports, budget, Kersey.
Okay, so, budget met last, earlier this week, I forget when. And we discussed the budget, as you heard, we discussed some things about how the budget book's going to come together, and also how we're going to be doing outreach. We're trying to schedule our outreach earlier this year in an effort to be able to provide people a form for feedback, so they can bring stuff back to us. I've already emailed all the PTOs, and I've heard back from Dallin, Pierce, Bishop, and Addison, who are all interested in having us come. And that's just who I've started with. So we will be going and doing a road show again, and doing a brief presentation, then opening it up for questions, and that's about it. And we'll be meeting again in early January, but I don't, we haven't scheduled yet.
Good, thanks, Kersey. Cindy, community relations?
Yeah, community relations. So I'm going to start with, we had the school committee chat this weekend at Cafe Nero, Jeff and I were there, and we had a couple of people came to talk to us from the Pierce about their playground. I know that, I think it's the same people that have emailed you, and so I told them that you were on top of it, we were looking at a facilities meeting, and we had a really good conversation.
And then, we're doing a survey town-wide of all the playgrounds.
Right, yeah.
Eventually.
And so, yeah, so, yeah, and we were trying to pull together a meeting with the rec.
Paul Marshall.
Yeah, who was doing that, to kind of come and give us an update. So that all went well. And then, this evening, we had a community relations meeting. We had two things on the agenda. The first one was kind of how to get the Arlington Public Schools and the Arlington Human Rights Commission to kind of work, you know, work out kind of what the process and procedures are for how they can work better together. And I think that went well. I think that the Human Rights Commission is going to kind of go back, and they're going to try to draft some stuff, and Kathy committed to having her group of...
Administrators.
Administrators, there you go, thank you. Also, kind of think about the same thing, and then we'll kind of come back and see if we can kind of massage that into something that we can all agree on. I think that we all want to work together, so it's just a matter of figuring out how to do that best. We also talked about, as we all know, at town meeting, there is the creation of a Rainbow Commission, for which we have the ability to fill a seat, but given that it is now just starting, and that the health, is she the health director, Christine?
Christine Bonjirano, yeah. Public health, Director of Public Health.
And so, they put out a call to get people to start to create this, so they have a whole bunch of resumes, and they asked us how we wanted to kind of help create this from the beginning. And we decided that probably the best thing to do would be to appoint someone from this committee to be on that committee that is going through those resumes, and will start the creation of this. And we elected Jennifer. So I have a motion from the subcommittee, we move that we would like to make a motion that we appoint Jennifer Seuss as our representative to the committee who is creating the Rainbow Commission, so that the school committee voice is heard in that.
So move.
It was long expired.
This is a second from Mr. Hayner, motion by Professor Starks. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jennifer, let us know how it goes.
Yeah, let us know. And happy holidays, the candy is for me.
Yes, that's very nice, Cindy.
We make it every year.
Every year.
It's just caro syrup, sugar, and water, so there are flavors, but the flavors don't actually have any real food in them, so if you have any food allergies, let me know, but I don't, I think they're pretty innocuous. Oh, there's powdered sugar on it, too. It's all sugar.
All sugar, why not? Why not?
Enjoy, happy holidays.
You kept the broccoli out, thank you.
There's no vegetables.
All right, thank you very much. Paul, district accountability, curriculum instruction?
Yeah, we, we're going to do a couple of meetings, it looks like, without objection of the folks who are around the table, the two dates that everybody can agree to would be Tuesday, January 9th, and Tuesday, January 16th at 5:30 PM. So without any objections, we'll book those two meetings, because we do have to look at the superintendent's goals and the evaluation form, plus the suspension data.
The dates again?
The 9th and the 16th, they're both Tuesdays at 5:30.
We have, okay, so, yeah, we might have to do it at 5:00. I can actually get out, because I, we have a building committee now on the 16th of January, I just noticed.
Oh, you want to do it at 5:00 on?
I can do it at 5:00 both of those days, actually, I can make it work.
Works.
Okay, well.
Sounds good.
Because the other one, because I haven't, then there's a winter concert here at the elementary school for the Addison. We can do 5:00.
We'll do it 5:00 then.
If it works for the superintendent.
Yeah.
Sorry, I know I said 5:00.
We'd like making the superintendent happy.
Okay, we can do it at 5:00.
It's not often we can do that, but, you know, we'll take the small opportunities.
If 5:00 works for you, okay. All right, thank you, Paul. Facilities, Jennifer?
Uh, no, nothing, but we are planning a meeting with John Marshall, I realized, from Parks and Rec.
Okay.
To just get a sense of, rather than each school round issue coming up piecemeal, I want to get a sense of the whole picture.
Okay.
Of the issues we're dealing with.
And before we go to Len, we did talk about Cindy at the community relations committee, that we wanted to align the language for the school committee, for the school district's referral of matters to the Arlington Human Rights Commission, the language and the policy.
So there's policy, oh, I just had that, wait a second.
There's a policy right now.
Wait, wait, I've got my notes.
The language...
E-C-A-C or something? Is that it?
But once, we don't quite have a clear picture of what the policy is going to exactly look like yet, but that's...
Right, so the, there is a policy, it only talks about vandalism.
Right.
And that's what the policy is about, it's E-C-A-C.
So the...
And, yeah, that may need to be changed, or we may need to have a policy on human rights, we don't actually, that's the only, it's the only place where you can find human rights in our...
So our policy should line up with the purpose, the preamble, or the purpose of the, of the Human Rights Commission?
Right.
Okay. All right, now policies and procedures, Len?
We're meeting again next week, Monday?
November 11th, yeah.
Yes, to continue our review of the policies with the MASC. Jen sent me some comments to look at, and we will plow through them. I guess we'll, we'll discuss with, with Mike, at what point we want to sort of stop and bring them before the committee to review. We're not there yet, probably a few more meetings to go.
Okay. School and Norman Task Force is really, I mean, legal services review, any...
Nothing at this time.
Arlington Public Building Committee, we've talked about, Gibbs Committee, we've kind of just talked about that, warrant committee, everybody got paid?
Got paid, and?
Oh, we didn't take it off?
We're going to take this off, or we're going to leave it on?
The warrant.
This, on, the warrant committee, I signed the warrant, I'm going to sign it no matter what, so, I mean, do you want to, I'm suggesting we eliminate this from the...
Bring it up again, this meeting.
Yeah, we can take it off. We'll take it off, yeah. Any liaison reports, anybody? Bill?
I went to the Edco meeting the other day, they had a speaker from the Massachusetts Association for Superintendents, talked about the induction program that Dr. Boddy went through, it was fascinating, gave me a big package, and I was going to, I'm going to, if any people are interested, I'd be happy to put it together for you. It's about superintendents and how to treat superintendents nicely. Yeah, it was.
You brought that up.
Basically, it's a pass from the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents, and he did a talk on the induction program and stuff.
What was it?
Tom?
Oh, Tom.
So, if people would want, I mean, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to give the package to Karen, and just let Karen know if you want a copy of it. It's a lot of good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah.
I don't know if, so, last Friday, several people from our district attended the Metco Directors Association Annual Conference, and it was about 500 people statewide, or in the area, where, in Metco districts, and our Metco Director, Margaret Cradle-Thomas, was involved in the planning on the board of the Metco Directors Association, and it was, they do an incredible job, it was a wonderful event, a lot of great, the keynote speaker was terrific, and the breakout sessions were all really well, well done.
Thank you, great, thank you, glad to hear that. All right, any other announcements, any new, any future agenda items? Bill?
Somewhere along the line, I'd like to hear from the superintendent or from the staff, how we do research in the district, how it goes through the curriculum. My concern is basically the libraries, and that's how I did it going through, and I know our libraries aren't the strong, one of our stronger points, and I'd like to know how we're addressing it. Our students are doing well, I'm just curious how we're addressing it.
Addressing what?
Research, how research is being taught throughout the district.
How to do research?
Right, the research skills and things of that nature.
Is that the right question, or do you want to, is it more of a, is it more about...
I can talk to Doc.
But is it more about librarians in particular?
Well, I want to, I want to know what we're doing instead of doing research through library, the library program. That's my question.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're at the point now in the meeting where, is there an executive session? Rob, is this?
I thought you wanted to talk a little bit about the negotiations, yeah?
Yeah, okay, so we're going to an executive session at this time, and we're going to, we're going to adjourn, and we're not going to go, it's not, we're not going to adjourn for a public session. Okay. So, to, so, motion to move into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which if held in open meeting, may have a detrimental effect.